I'll call the July 18th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting to order and ask those in the audience who would like to join the City Council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item of special business this evening, Agenda Bill 7203, State of the County Address, and we are honored this evening to have King County Council member Reagan Dunn here to present that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. I'll just be brief. Just a couple of years ago, we annexed in, or you did, a precinct in my district, so now I can say I represent Issaquah, Washington, with about nine other cities. So, just real brief, I usually go to all my cities every year to give an update. First, talk about the budget. We've got a $9 billion biennial budget. We're going to have a $48 million shortfall this year, so it's a significant shortfall. Public health is going to be impacted, sheriff and helicopter and marine unit is going to be impacted, so I wanted folks to know that. Issaquah-Hobart Road continues to be a problem, we know that, congestion, it's one of my top priorities. I appreciate the city working with the Roads Division. I've been able to bring about $2.5 million to that project since 2008. Traffic cameras, signal timing, turn lanes, and I go down every year to lobby the legislature for additional funding for that. Our unincorporated area roads levy is maxed out. We can't raise it anymore because state law. So, we're trying to change that so that we can be helpful in partnering with this city to make sure that we can increase capacity through there. So, that's a huge priority, and I look forward to working with this council and this city to dovetail with some of your priorities as well. Switching gears off the road, I currently chair the King County Flood Control District. It's a separate unit of government, it's a special purpose district. Since our creation, we've put about a half a billion dollars in infrastructure improvements throughout the county to reduce flooding, protect lives, homes, and property. Every year, over seven years, we've had clean audits, and no large district has a better overhead to capital ratio than the flood district. Ninety-four percent of what we levy goes to on-the-ground funding of projects, which we're very proud of. This year, Issaquah received $106,000 to help fund Habitat Improvement of the Salmon Run Nature Park, and that's about 400 feet of habitat restoration. That's through Subregional Opportunity Fund. There's also a grant program which I continue to urge the city to apply for that's several million dollars, it could be anything from culverts, rationally related to water and flooding that isn't in our six-year capital improvement budget. Switching gears, Conservation Futures Funding Recommendations just came out, and one of the recommendations is to fund $593,000 to purchase 28 acres next to the Cougar-Squawk Corridor connection down here, and so that's obviously been a priority of a variety of environmental groups because it is such an important wildlife corridor and recreation corridor. So, I will continue to ride herd to make sure that funding comes through. I think it's very important. Something that happened today, we all focus on transit-oriented development, and we know that that's where we need to put the bulk of workforce housing and low-income housing. Obviously, we've all seen ST3 that comes out here, and today, the council unanimously approved a bond on a portion of future hotel and motel taxes, which is going to create an $87 million program, and that program's going to be a competitive RFP process to help fund this transit-oriented development. I think it's something the city of Issaquah should keep its eye on and focus on, and we'll help you there if there are areas of application that you want us to showcase. So, those are the major items. There've been some great trail openings recently and trailhead openings around here on the Issaquah Alps. I represent portions of Bellevue, all of Newcastle, half of Renton, Covington, Black Diamond, Maple Valley, Enem Qua, all the way up to Snow Colony Pass. The unincorporated areas south of here are about 70,000 residents, and now proudly, one precinct of Issaquah. So, now you have the right to call me up and yank my chain when we're not getting it done for you. And that's all I had today, just again, good to be here, and now that we do have you in the city, I'd be honored to be able to come back every year and just give you a brief update, and if the mayor will allow, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Absolutely. Are there questions for King County Council member Reagan Dunn?
I don't have any questions, but I really do appreciate you mentioning for our citizens, making reference of the joint study we're going to do together between the city and the county and study the Issaquah-Hobart Corridor between SR 800 and Front Street. That's the type of collaboration that we will be doing more of as we at the city here really work to address our traffic issues. I appreciate your awareness of that.
Yeah, thank you, and yeah, I read the article the other day in the Issaquah Press, and I think, yeah, if we're going to get it done right, you know, it needs to be both of us working together, and we need our state legislators to give us the flexibility and the tools we need at the local level to accomplish that. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate the invitation to work with us on that, and I suspect it'll be a part of our legislative agenda, which we will be considering soon. I would also pass along that we are very anxious to work with other jurisdictions who rely on the Issaquah-Hobart Road also, and maybe we can build a kind of coalition that could be successful in getting much-needed funding to make the improvements that are necessary.
Great, we look forward to working with you on those issues.
Good, thank you very much. We'll now move to audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment this evening will have the opportunity to do so. Please direct your comments to the entire council and not individuals. As a reminder, it is not a question-and-answer session. When recognized, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and your relationship to the city. If you have written comments, please provide those to the city clerk. Visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When it turns yellow, you are within the last minute of your five-minute comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted comment time. As a reminder, personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory marks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker's out of order, I will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat, and if they do not comply, ask them to leave the council chamber. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. We take them seriously, and we thank members of the public who take the time to come and address the council. With that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Jen Gray.
Jen Gray, 22417 Southeast 36th Lane in Issaquah, and I am a homeowner. And what I'm here today is to talk about the traffic-transportation issue, projects that you have on your agenda. And I am president of the Providence Point Community, the umbrella board that oversees all the nearly 1,400 residents in all our policies and decision-making. And it goes without saying that Providence Point totally endorses the traffic signalization project at our intersection between our two connections on 43rd. And one of the reasons is because it's definitely safer ingress and egress onto 43rd. In addition, we're hoping that it really does stop some of the speeding. As you know, with all the increased housing developments and apartments, et cetera, that are going on not only 43rd but 228th and in Summamish, there is a lot more traffic going down 43rd, and we have witnessed many times speed limits when you see the flashing sign that says 60 miles an hour, 55 miles an hour, et cetera. So, the speeding is going on, and we do support the project and the bond issue. As you recall, during the public input period that was over in the Eagle Room, we must have had 30 to 40 people from Providence Point there. So, I want to just thank the City Council for putting together the Traffic Task Force. I think they did a wonderful job, and I really do hope you include our project in your bond issue. It's almost shovel-ready, since the plans have already been drawn. It needs a little tweaking to bring it up to code, but I don't think it'll cost that much more or take that much longer, and it'd be something that could be done sooner than a lot of the other projects. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
No one further has signed up?
I see Mr. Kapler approaching the lecterns. Good evening, David.
Yes, good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I'm supposed to speak to the council here, so I'll tell the council how great Reagan Dunn has been for Issaquah and the open space that he's acquired and the Tibbetts Creek area, as well as the mainstay of Issaquah Creek. It's been really important to what happens to our city in terms of flooding and those kinds of things, and habitat, of course, and the salmon. So, he's been really great about that, I appreciate it. Park Bridge, it's on the agenda for referral tonight, I believe, it's over the budget. I don't understand why we're building a 12-foot-wide bridge. It's not like we're going to have, unless we build a barrier right above the bridge to stop the salmon, it's not like it's going to be the bridge at the Hatchery or something. You'll see salmon from it, but it's not going to be a huge number of people on it. My understanding is they're going to 12-foot wide so they can get trucks across it to mow the lawn or do whatever on the other side, but that's accessible from using juniper or dogwood. Also, to me, the bridge is a climbing structure. It's been raised by at least one park board member concerned about kids climbing over the arches, and then you've got all this other metal stuff that's kind of a giant jungle gym for the mayfly design. I don't understand why we're doing all these plantings that are going to be real trees, not ground covers, that are going to make the bridge hard to see in a few years anyway, hopefully, if the plantings do what they're supposed to. To me, if there's going to be artwork in the park, get it where it will be seen and enjoyed over the long term rather than hidden with the growth we want to have around the bridge. Sunset, back to the traffic bond issue, sunset, let's have bike lanes for the bikes that want to go fast. Let's get the people who are going to be families and slower riders, get them over on Alder or Andrews or other side streets. They don't need to be on Sunset with all the trucks and all. And bringing all the people in a bike corridor to eight-foot-wide, highly congested rainier trail in this area doesn't make sense to me either. If they're going to go south or north, use those Alder or Andrews. Newport Way, the eastern section over here, there's two lanes proposed southbound for just part of it, and I believe it doesn't go far enough. If you can have two lanes southbound, it's got to go beyond the elementary school, it's got to get to Sunset. So, the people, the residents of Issaquah are going to be paying for this, can actually get to at least there and then go up the hill to the residents on Squawk. If you're just going down from two lanes to one lane at the elementary school, you're just going to be not helping much, especially not helping the existing residents. And Newport Way, the western part, make sure we have a center-turn lane so people going westbound will be able to get into the new Grand Big Tree Ridge Trailhead there, rather than having to go past there and go into Summer Hill and make a U-turn in that neighborhood or go all the way to a roundabout further to the west. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and the City Council members. My name is Gregory Wagner, and I live at 24016 Southeast 111th Street, Issaquah, for 38 years. I have been a member of the IVS since 2006. In this time period, I was a volunteer for eight years and a van driver for seven years. I was a board member from March of 2008 until May 2012. I'm here tonight because IVS is not providing activity that I have, along with others, enjoyed since I became a member in 2006, which is playing pool, which is one of the main reasons I joined. A pool room is one of the main activities for men in the senior center. IVS had a beautiful pool room with two pool tables, the room was all carpeted, had beautiful pictures, windows looking in the main lobby so people could see and watch and come enjoy playing pool if they wished to. Then, on August 3rd, 2015, the pool room was closed for salmon days, which was closed until October 3rd, or excuse me, salmon days, which isn't until October 3rd and 4th. The pool room remained closed until November, three and a half months. When the pool room finally reopened, IVS had sold one of the pool tables and had moved the pool room into a craft room. No carpet on the floor, no pictures, cold at times. Now, we're playing pool on a concrete floor. We have had one person fall and hurt themselves. What a way to treat seniors. Now, here we are, July 2016. IVS posted a note on the pool room door that the pool room would be shut down July 11th, 2016, for another four months. This time, will they sell the pool tables during the salmon days? In July newsletter, there was no mention of playing pool as an activity for seniors. What does this mean? A senior center without a pool table is unthinkable. Me and my friends have other senior centers to play pool, but there is this caregiver that brings a retired doctor who really enjoys playing pool but can't because the pool room will be shut down for at least four months. They can't go to the community center because it's only open for kids, summer camp. Mayor Butler and the City Council, it is apparent to me and many others that IVS is not serving its senior members and their guests in a very meaningful way. I'm hoping on August 8th, excuse me, August 1st, with the hiring of Jeff Watling, I hope that's right, for position of Director of Parks and Recreation, that the city can take over the senior center and make the center a first-class place. The taxpayers of Issaquah and their seniors deserve this. Thank you, respectfully, Gregory Wagner.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Hello, Elizabeth Mopin, 100 Big Bear Place Northwest Issaquah. Last Monday, we heard a bit about the central Issaquah plan and how off-target it was as far as affordable housing, and I have just been glancing through some of the changes that are proposed, and I'm really glad that you're thinking about making some changes. What concerns me is that developers only have to provide any affordable housing if they're going above a certain height or floor-area ratio, so there's no guarantee that you'll get any. And it seems to me that history has taught us that if a development includes some affordable housing as part of it, the city needs some provision to make sure that the affordable housing is built before the rest of it is finished, because developers seem to have a habit of finishing everything else and then saying, "Oh, I'm sorry, we just didn't have the space, the right land," whatever, to do the affordable housing bit. You want that affordable housing somewhat concentrated in the central Issaquah area because that's close to transit. We don't want another development like Rose Crest that's a mile and a half uphill from transit. It doesn't work real well for low-income people who can't afford vehicles. So, I think it would be advantageous to the city for future development to make sure that there are some real requirements for affordable housing and that it has to be built first, not just pawned off saying, "Well, if you can find other land, you can build it someplace else." There's not a lot of other land, but I'm really glad you're considering doing something. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening desiring to speak? Yes, ma'am. Oh, that's okay.
My name is Joanne Van Dursen. I live in Issaquah at Calcaree, 1,000 Cabin Creek Lane Southwest. I used to go to the senior center, and I quit going because I'm not the kind of person that likes this undertone of fiasco, fighting disagreement among people. I was a fixture of the computer classes for several years, and then, when I went back after having two years fighting cancer, which I'm totally free, the people were told in an email, Carlos and Michelle, that their services were no longer needed. The point that I'm going to ask for is that, well, two other things. The lunches are not free, none of the programs are free, you have to pay for them, including the trips, the transportation is $8, and the coffee, when I left, was .35. In a city that I come from, Green Bay, 65 years old and over, senior citizens, everything is free. I would ask that the City Council or whoever is the CEO of this operation, close it. I'm getting real tired of reading in the Issaquah paper about, one week we have an article, and we ought to have another editorial, and we have another editorial, and so that would be my suggestion, close it down, shut it down, until we can come to some resolution where the senior center is a place that people like me can go and not feel intimidated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening desiring to speak? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing no one then, audience comments are closed, and we will now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Batiste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended last week, on Wednesday, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues meeting. There were no action items, but there was discussion. We got a really good overview on the best start for kids. TOLA had a lot of questions about that that all, I believe, have been answered now, so I'll be passing that along, and also an informational update on Sound Transit 3, and an overview of the King County Biennial Budget, so to follow up on comments from King County Council member Dunn. There were several areas of potential cuts, and I just wanted to read through because the committee was really interested to hear back from cities and wanted people to pass along their ideas to the county council. The financial status of the county funds varies substantially by fund. Some funds, like Metro Transit, are in very good shape due to the strong economy. Others, especially public health, E911, and the general fund, face substantial challenges. In the general fund, several potential areas of cuts could have impacts on cities, including potential elimination of sheriffs, marine, and air support units, potential closure of the MRJC for booking, potential closure of work release, potential reductions in medical examiner's office, potential reductions in prosecutors and support staff slowing filings, and potential reductions in human services, including services for victims in criminal justice agencies. So, as they were giving the overview, they wanted just to see if there's feedback that could come back to the county council. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I've come up this Wednesday, the 20th, will be the Regional Transit Committee meeting, and I'll, again, continue working on the metro-long-range transit plan. Ends my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterside?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. We met last Thursday on July 14th. There were no action taken during the meeting, but one thing to note is that we did a report on the community meetings for developing EFOR strategic plan and that these meetings are going quite well, and that over 400 people have responded to the online survey that EFOR is conducting. You can access the survey from the EFOR website and take it yourself. The community meeting coming to Issaquah will be held on July 27th at 6:00 PM over in the Eagle Room, and everyone is welcome to attend. Next, I'll speak about the Council Services and Safety Committee meeting of July 12th. I chaired the meeting as a sub while TOLA was out of town. There was three items on the agenda, one of which pending approval of tonight's, well, I take that back, I'm getting ahead of myself. One of the items is regarding the Intergovernmental Relations Manager position, which is the third item on tonight's regular business agenda tonight. The committee did vote three to nothing in support of funding that position, so that'll be in front of all of us under regular business this evening. We did get an update from the mayor staff's efforts around senior services. It was a good update, it was very positive progress, and 100% of the audience comments we received were all positive around, you know, what the progress that your staff has been making, and I was glad to see it as well. And then last, we did get a report from staff on changes to how we're going to administer the nonprofit or mayor's fund money. It's a long overdue, nice update, we generally call it nonprofit funding in our budget, and we'll be seeing a lot of details on that when the budget process comes forward, but I think of notable things that it distinguishes the difference between what are just contracts for service, such as the chamber running the Fourth of July Parade for us, we just need to contract with them, that doesn't have to go through that same process, and others which are really increased capacity for nonprofits, which we do in many cases via helping staff development but also with capital projects, and the plan is to open that part of those funds up to an RFP process, or at least an application process, so potentially we can get other nonprofits within our community benefiting from that fund. So, again, we'll learn more about that as it comes forward in budget. And my last update is around the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting, we're meeting this Thursday, the 21st. There's quite a few items on the agenda. One was mentioned during audience comments this evening, it's a very important matter concerning Confluence Park. The bids have come in for the Phase 2 improvements, including the bridge, and all the bids came in higher than our budget, so we have a decision. And all the bids came in higher than our budget, so we have a decision to make. We either reduce the scope or approve more funds or do something different still. So that'll be a very important conversation. We're also going to get an update on the water utility. We're going to get an update. We're going to discuss the pavement management program. And I hope to discuss, too, you know, what we might be able to do with the unappropriated roughly 200 K that we have in the 2016 budget for pavement management. We're also going to get an update on the Three Trails Crossing project. Now, there is a redevelopment project happening in that vicinity, and that developer has some obligations through the State Environmental Programs Act, or SEPA, to make improvements to that area. And we can see a way potentially to achieve the updates that we wanted in Three Trails Crossing through that, plus maybe some of our impact fees as well. So we'll be discussing that potential project. And then we're also going to take a look at the new public engagement process that Public Works Engineering has designed to really help bring the public into the early stage of the design of roadways sooner to make sure that the community's needs are understood and get a fair opportunity to be included in the design. And we're going to use the Sunset Way right here as that example. Staff is going to be kicking off that public engagement process very soon with the intent of actually completing it in the October timeframe. So should that project be included on a fund or a ballot issue that we're going to address later this evening, then the public, I want everyone to realize that whereas that project right now is labeled as conceptual design, this process, which we'll complete in the October timeframe before the ballot election date in November, will give every one of the stakeholders an opportunity to participate in a more detailed design so everybody would know that by the time the election comes along, would have a lot of information about what we want to do with that project. I've made my sentiments known, and we've discussed it earlier, and we'll discuss a little bit more about that later this evening as well. So that public engagement process, we're going to learn about that on Thursday. And then finally, the last item, and you heard Representative Dunn mention this earlier, we're going to be considering funding for a project in coordination with King County to enter into an interlocal agreement where the county and the city will split 50/50 the cost to do a corridor study of the front street from Interstate 90 all the way south to State Route 18. Now, that's quite a few miles, and that's exactly what is needed. The primary issues for backups that we have and the congestion we have in Front Street and Front Street South within our borders is all based upon the lack of capacity and overcapacity and performance or poor performance of what happens in the Hobart Road in South. So that is an issue we can only resolve for our citizens if we work in cooperation with the county. You heard Councilmember Dunn say he's committed to it. We're going to work on this. And I am absolutely determined that the county feels our pain and that they understand that very, very well. And so I like the idea that we're moving forward like this. This is an item on our regional agenda, so it's moving very quickly. And this is exactly, you know, part of that multi-prong effort that we need to be making at the city to address our traffic issues. So that's a pretty packed agenda for Council Infrastructure. And I'll see Stacy and Bill on Thursday to go over all that. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of meetings this week. Wednesday, the 20th, King Conservation District, I'll be attending. And we're working on our 2017th work plan. The next day, on the 21st, is Wyra Eight. That's Water Resource Inventory Area. And the following week, I'll be attending the Kokoni Work Group as they also work on their next year's work plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Polly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore will be meeting August 4th, 5:30, in the council chambers. The agenda has not been finalized, but tentatively, there should be the following items on. An introduction and preview of population updates, the removal of the East Cougar Mountain PAA, King County Islands annexation, and an information item on Gateway Apartments and the SEPA discussion, which is the project on Newport Way West. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council President Goodman?
I'll report.
Thank you for the mayor's report. Councilmember Marks is an excused abnance, absent. He's not here this evening, and it's excused. There will not be an executive session held this evening. I attended the Pugetstown Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting on July the 14th. We participated in an engagement session to discuss the 2018 update to Transportation 2040. Two items that seemed to generate the most interest were roadway preservation and a regional integrated transit system. Transportation Policy Board approved the recommended projects to receive PSRC 2018 to 2020 federal funds. And included in that recommendation was our Newport Way Northwest Improvement Project for, from Northwest Maple Street to West Sunset. The Sound Transit Capital Committee meeting on July 14th. We considered six actions related to East Link. The only reason I mention that is that it's currently under construction right now, but there are a number of interlocal agreements and additional construction contracts. That project is moving forward quite nicely. Don't hold your breath, though. It's not scheduled to open until 2023. The Julius Bone Pool earned a Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Lead Silver Certification. The renovation will save about 60% in overall energy use, displacing 315 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions per year. I attended this afternoon the I-405 SR-167 Executive Advisory Group meeting. We received updates on Sound Transit III, Eastside Rail Corridor Coordination between King County and Washdott, and an interesting update on tolling on 405. Some of the early successes, the southbound general purpose peak period travel times and speeds have improved with express toll lane operations. Weekday peak period general purpose travel times are faster in both directions through the section of the corridor with dual express toll lanes. There are a number of challenges and concerns, and that's primarily in the North Brown I-405 lane between SR-522 and I-5. And that's due to a transition of five lanes to three lanes. I'd like to remind everyone that Commander Stan Conrad's retirement open house is on July 28th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM in the Eagle Room. So I hope that our citizens and staff and council members who can attend that can attend that and wish him well as he completes his distinguished service with the Issaquah Police With that now, we'll move to the consent calendar. And I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll for July 18th, 2016 have been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. I would now ask the clerk to read into the record the consent calendar.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the count's payables and payroll, July 18, 2016. Item B seeks approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July 5th. Item C, AB 7138, Transportation Improvement Board Grant, Northwest Holly Street Improvements, seeks to authorize submittal. Item D, AB 7194, Confluence Park Pedestrian Bridge Project, Phase Two Construction, seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. And item E, AB 7200, Amendments to the Central Issaquah Standards Involving the Density Bonus Program, Plant Size and Spacing, Building Mass in Design, and Motorcycle Parking Spaces, seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you very, very much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar to regular Seeing none then, Council President Goodman?
I would make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Our first item under regular business is Agenda Bill 7191, Amendments to Land Use Code and Central Issaquah Standards involving a number of different topics. This is coming back from the Land and Shore Committee. Councilmember Polly?
Mr. Mayor, do I need to make a motion first, or?
It's up, no, you don't.
Okay. Well, I think I can, and then I'll give some comments after.
That would be great.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you. I would move to adopt Ordinance Number 2773, Amending the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, including sky bridges, on-street parking, building encroachment, street standards, and urban driveways.
Second. Moved and seconded, Councilmember Polly?
Thank you. So this particular Agenda Bill did come to Land and Shore Committee twice, on June 2nd and July 5th. It has several items again. It is another one of the Land Use Code bills that will be coming through this year with many things that do not seem completely related to one another, but all require to be changed this year. Skybridge design standards were missing from the original Central Issaquah Design and Development Standards, and they have been added with this. There has been a clarification of the depth of on-street parking. There was a clarification of building encroachments and engagement with the public right of way. There were some additional performance standards to streets added for street standard reduction priorities. And there was a clarification of on-street parking credits. The last one was a clarification on urban driveway standards. So the council committee recommended changes in addition to those by staff and the Planning Policy Commission, and those included further limiting the frequency and separation of sky bridges, clarifying under what circumstances and exception can be sought to allow head-in or angled parking, added landscape requirements for head-in or angled parking, added language for pedestrian and bicycle orientation to the performance standards to street standard reductions. And the committee also revised the proposed credit for affordable housing for on-street parking and would like to see this item discussed in conjunction with the Housing Strategy and Assessment, which is currently in progress with staff right now. And those were the changes from the council. And I guess if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Anyone, is there additional discussion or questions? Councilmember Ramos?
Just like to say, this is a good start to work on making some of these updates and changes. We're going to continue this as we work on the CIP that we talked about in our last work session and all the much more, the bigger pieces we're going to be dealing with on that. So I appreciate getting all these nice clarifications done so we can continue working on the big piece here in the next month or so. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none then, all those in favor of adopting Ordinance Number 2773, Amending the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, including a number of different elements, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7198, November election, November general election ballot item, local transportation projects. This is coming back to the council from Council President Goodman.
Yes, I have it. I'm just trying to find the page because there's all these big old outs here.
And we do have a presentation this evening, and so would you like to?
Yes. Right ahead, Emily. Great. Thank you very much. At the June 20th City Council meeting, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance establishing a special election for November. And that election would refer a financing proposal for local traffic improvements to Issaquah voters. So tonight, I'm here just to give an overview of what that ordinance includes and talk about next steps. But before I do that, I wanted to highlight that, again, this package of improvements is only one piece of the comprehensive effort that we as a city are putting together to try to tackle traffic. So as we've discussed, the local package is just a piece of this pie, and we are actively involved in a number of other efforts. We're involved in collaborating with regional partners on improvements to infrastructure and services that will ease our traffic burden. The council also made adjustments to developer fees to ensure that they are paying their fair share for current and future improvements. And we have and will continue to advocate for state and county funds for projects that could benefit Issaquah. We've been very successful at winning grants for local road and trail projects and at exploring and entering into cost-sharing agreements with private parties. We have evaluated our current and future transportation needs and have created with community involvement and implemented action plans for our transportation system. We've also assessed crossings and non-motorized mobility and have recommended and installed improvements that improve those, that infrastructure. But there's still a piece of the traffic mitigation or solution pie that is required in this comprehensive approach, and that's the city's pursuit and completion of local road improvements. So the projects that you've asked us to include in the ordinance are projects that have been on our transportation plans, and they are ones that may not be able to be completed in the next several years without additional local resources being dedicated. So the projects that we were asked to include in the ordinance are on the screen there. The bond ordinance seeks to establish a special election for the purpose of authorizing the city to issue $50 million of general obligation bonds, which would be used to finance transportation improvements that are designed to reduce congestion, enhance safety, improve local streets, and related amenities. So the projects are Newport Way, Maple to Sunset Way, Newport Way, SR-900 to Southeast 54th, East Sunset Way, and Southeast 43rd Way at Providence Point, an intersection signalization and realignment project. This is the financing picture. As I said, $50 million to be repaid within 25 years. The city estimates the measure will result in an annual property tax rate of 33 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And for example, the additional property taxes on a home or a property assessed at $500,000 would be roughly $165 a year. The actual annual property taxes per household necessary to repay the bonds will depend upon interest rates, the timing of the issue, the amount of the bonds issued, and changes in property values. This is the ballot measure that's in your ordinance. The City Council adopted Ordinance Number X regarding voter approval for financing traffic improvements. If approved, this proposition authorizes the city to finance capital projects designed to reduce congestion, enhance safety, and improve local streets and related amenities. It would authorize issuance of no more than $50 million of general obligation bonds maturing within 25 years to be repaid by the annual levy of excess property taxes, all as provided in the ordinance, should this proposition be approved. So the action on your agenda tonight would be to consider the ordinance that would set the special election for November 8th. The ordinance also directs staff to perform implementation steps that are required under the election law. That includes that city staff would send their appropriate paperwork to the King County Election Office to file a special election and ballot measure. City staff would announce pro and con committees recruitment. An electronic application forum and information about this part of the process will be available on the city's website, hopefully tomorrow. And city communications staff will advertise the recruitment through a variety of media. The recruitment would close on Wednesday, July 27th, at 5:00 PM. Then, per the law, the mayor will make the appointments, and the city clerk's office will finalize. will finalize an agenda bill recommending those appointments for council confirmation. The City Council will formally confirm the mayor's appointments at the August 1st council meeting. And then on August 2nd, the city clerk's office will notify applicants of the outcome, distribute county elections information regarding committees, and will file the appropriate paperwork with the county elections office. City staff and the city attorney will also prepare an explanatory statement for the voter's pamphlet and transmit it to the elections office by the August 5th deadline. As Councilmember Winterstein also mentioned, we have a upcoming council infrastructure committee on July 21st, and we've identified this action item on that agenda. At the last city council meeting, you asked us to embark on a pilot process to create some added formalization and consistency on how we approach significant road improvement projects, and an important aspect of that process will be our public engagement. So on the 21st, at the council infrastructure meeting, we'll outline that pilot process, and in particular, we'll apply that process to how we would approach the East Sunset Way project. As you all know, the East Sunset Way project is at an early point on our design-build continuum, and we have begun seeking public input on the various design options, and will continue to seek that input over the course of the next month. We committed to return to council in the early fall with the preferred concept design so that it can be communicated to voters in advance of the November election. So with that, I can answer any questions about the ordinance or any other things.
Are there questions? Seeing none then, Council President Goodman.
Make a motion?
Sure. I would move to adopt Ordinance Number 2774, providing for the submission to the voters of the city at a special election to be held therein on November 8th, 2016, in conjunction with the state general election to be held on the same date of a proposition authorizing the city to issue its general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing certain transportation improvements in the principal amount of no more than $50 million payable by annual property tax levies to be made in excess of regular property tax levies and to levy those excess property taxes.
Second?
Moved and seconded, discussion or questions?
I had a question about the pilot public process, and specifically, Emily, you mentioned bringing that preferred concept slash design, not sure which word we're using, back to council, and, and so to communicate to the public what that would, what that would be, what the preferred option would be, is, what is the council's role in that choosing, if you will, that preferred option?
Sure. So this is a new process, and so we don't have a model to apply here, so we're receptive to what input you have. What we have envisioned is that we would seek input on the design elements that the community would like to have. We've talked about a number of things. I'll just give you a few examples. Bike lanes, center turn lane, sidewalks, additional landscaping as buffers between elements. So there's not enough right-of-way for us to add all of those things potentially, and so we'd like some community input on the trade-offs and prioritization of those elements. So we'll be seeking that over the next month, and then we'd anticipate checking back in with the CIC, and checking with Sheldon, because I don't remember quite all the steps here, checking back in with the CIC after we've gathered that input and have begun to gain a sense of how we should direct the engineers that are helping us to refine the design into a visual. That's what we refer to as the concept design. It's a low level of preliminary engineering, and so we would bring that information to CIC and seek their input and guidance at that point in time, and we'd be able to direct our team and the consultants a little bit more on that preliminary concept, and then they would refine that, and we would bring that back to the full council, and the full council could make a formal motion, a resolution, in support of pursuing that particular concept design, and then we would be able to communicate that to the public so that they would know in advance of the election what the design is intended to build.
So we would be looking at infrastructure this Thursday, beginning to talk about what that pilot public process looks like.
Correct.
And have input on what that process looks like, how we might.
Correct.
And then, at the same time, Sunset Way would be the pilot project for that process, and then have that back before the council sometime in September, or some sort of expression of support in plenty of time before a November vote and before ballots go out.
Correct. And we can give some more specificity to the dates at the CIC meeting.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Polly.
Due to the significance of the vote, I have prepared some comments tonight that I'd like to read.
Perfect.
This is probably one of the most significant votes that this council will take in a long, long time, and I know that we've had many touchpoints with this and heard a lot of information, and I found in order to organize what I wanted to say tonight, I really had to write it down and sort through it, because this is, this is our biggest issue that we face. Regional pass-through traffic has the highest negative impact on quality of life in Issaquah. Citizens have identified this as the number-one concern loudly and clearly. Over the past decade, this dissatisfaction has grown to where residents talk of using I-90 to get from one end of town to the other during peak periods due to the intolerable congestion on local streets. While there have been a few wins in recent years, growth beyond our boundaries has exceeded our ability to see the benefits, as any ease of movement around town is quickly swallowed up by an ever-increasing demand on our roads. Issaquah is the regional crossroad and most direct route for many of our neighboring cities to connect to the highway system. The council and mayor's office will continue to lobby for improvements elsewhere in the region in order to take our streets back. Council members will work to support these efforts to improve regional and straight routes between cities and I-90 and I-405, and to access to I-90 and Issaquah at the interchange of Front Street and I-90. So far, funds for studies have been approved, but the project completion is many, many long years away. Issaquah-Hobart Road should not be designed to feed traffic from cities south and east of Issaquah into our town and onto Newport Way. We need to work with the state and county to get the needed improvements to Highway 18 and 167 to allow those cities and their residents access to I-90 and I-405. To funnel those commuters through Issaquah's downtown makes no sense. These areas continue to grow, as Issaquah is, and the Issaquah-Hobart Road is not the only piece of the solution. Additional over and under crossings of I-90 are essential, essential for local Issaquah residents to access both sides of our city divided by interstate highway. The undercrossing of I-90 near the post office has been the single biggest improvement in the 20 years I have lived here. But as congestion has worsened, and there has been little to no improvement in the regional roads that surround us to the south and southeast, the benefit has been quickly diminished. I am hoping that there's a way to separate the pass-through from the local traffic. On SR 900 in particular, south, as folks enter the city so that our Talus neighbors have a way to get home in the evening that is less than a 30-minute, 1.5-mile drive. Mobility solutions in Issaquah are complex and multifaceted, and include minimizing the effect of pass-through traffic on local users, creating a complete multimodal network, and continuing with capital improvements as our infrastructure ages. Previously, the council has authorized an average of a couple million or so in taxpayer funds to maintain our infrastructure yearly. This amount does not include developer contributions or costs associated with the current street pavement overlay program. This spend and these projects, for the most part, do not ease the burden of regional traffic on our roads. Within our boundaries alone, we cannot pave our problem away. But maintaining our transportation network and our aging infrastructure is an important city responsibility, just as providing water and sewer services and police and fire protection, for example. The spending on our roads has been held at this level for a very long time in the city's annual budget. The investment has not been at a level where we can keep up with our network as it ages. Over the last few years, council and the mayor's office began discussing how to better address the gap between the needs and our progress. The citizens' task force, which was convened this year, reviewed a substantial list of projects, some that have languished for decades, on this list due to their significant cost of improvement. They selected nine projects from the list after extensive review and deliberation and public input. The council is considering tonight a proposal to package these improvements into a bond package that will be put to the voters in November, very similar to a school district bond. The council will still be continuing its annual capital expenditures in the range of 1 to 2 million through our regular budget discussions, but this bond will allow some major legacy projects to be addressed. The upcoming bond proposal mostly deals with infrastructure improvements that upgrade local roads with local tax revenues. The council has selected to shorten the list recommended by the citizens' traffic task force, eliminating some projects that may have the potential for shared funding with developers in areas that are currently experiencing redevelopment in our city. Developers are required to not only pay a per-unit or per-square-foot fee to offset new traffic impacts, they are also required to contribute to transportation improvements adjacent to and benefiting their projects, such as the new light on Gilman Boulevard and the extensive new construction on East Lake-Samamish Parkway. While I personally would rather see a larger package going out to bond this fall than just the four projects selected, I respect the rationale I have heard from my fellow council members as to why these four projects and why now. I do, however, believe that two of the projects on the larger list are highly valued by the community at large, and after consideration and deliberation of this current ordinance, I will be proposing that council consider prioritizing these two in our future round of annual capital construction when we consider those programs this fall and during our budget deliberations. The two projects are the improvements at the intersection of Maple Street and the Trader Joe's entrance in the Common Shopping Center, and the increase in parking capacity in the Old Town area. I will be proposing that the considered priorities include a revised interim intersection layout at the Commons intersection that improves traffic flow and safety without the construction of a new roundabout at this time. And while I believe more parking capacity in Old Town is necessary, I do not believe that a 400-stall structure is practical or desirable at this time. I will be proposing to add some additional parking capacity in Old Town that will complement and expand the current capacity, similar in size to the existing King County Library lot. So for the ordinance at hand, I am strongly in support of the ordinance as written and the four projects included. Two sections of Newport Way, the upgrading of Sunset Way from I-90 to Front, and the addition of a stoplight and intersection improvements on 43rd Way at Providence Point. I strongly encourage all of my fellow council members to support this measure and this new mechanism for funding the construction of local transportation improvement projects with local tax dollars. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? Councilmember Ramos.
I too am very much in support of doing some work here in our transportation improvement that we've been working towards quite a ways with all the committee that did all their work. And what I'd like to see, all these things, we make trade-offs, and, and the one thing I just want to mention is, we talk, call it traffic improvement bond, I would prefer the name transportation improvement bond, because we're really looking at traffic or transportation infrastructure. We're looking at a lot of amenities, we're looking at bike lanes, we're looking at a lot of safety items, a lot of pedestrian safety, and those are really transportation improvements that are going to be really needed for the city, but they're not directly addressing much in the way of traffic congestion directly. The one project that is, is Newport Way between Sunset and Maple that is adding more capacity. But the rest of them are adding more amenities that we really want and need to have complete roads and streets that we would like to have in, in this town. I have a few concerns, and one of them is, also on the ballot this fall is going to be ST 3. And this council has talked about ST 3 previously, we've written letters of support, and we very much want that to, to pass, because that's dealing with our bigger issues. So we're asking the taxpayers, again, to look at funding that bond as well as a local bond. And those things just keep adding up for me. So I'm always looking at social equity in what I do, when I look at the projects and cost, and, excuse me, all these costs keep adding up, and some of us can pay them very easily and, and others can't. And even if you're just a renter here, usually those property taxes flow down to the renters. And so I'm just always very aware of that cost and looking at that, and, and, because it's all, it's throwing an extra straw on the camel's back as we work on affordable housing and the other issues we're trying to work on in town here. That's just adding to, to those things that we're going to continue working on, but it's, it's, it's the best way we have to pay for it now, but it's still, it still concerns me. I'm hoping, I say I support these projects, and I'm hoping the public will support them as well, particularly in the fall when we have two major projects completed. When Front Street redo is done and East Lake-Samamish, I'm hoping there'll be examples to the public of the good projects that the city can do, make some improvements that people can see, and see the value and the worth and the quality of work that the city does to get those done. And as those complete, hopefully right there around September, October, the, they'll be just before the vote, and they can see what, what things can happen, and it will help build support for, for this bond. I'm going to just want, most projects I'm not too worried about, but the Sunset Avenue one I have some concerns with. We started talking about a little bit that earlier. It's the one that has the least design to it. It's really concept, but a concept of a concept. It's not even to the, to the point where we really worked with it. And, and that, that's difficult for me, because you're asking me, and then eventually the voter, to vote on something that you can't really see yet. And we've been talking about how to deal with that, we got some timeframes coming up, so that the infrastructure is going to be working with the city on, you know, developing that process, so prior to the vote, people can see what, what they're actually going to be voting on a better, more detailed concept, if you will, that has some, some basis in reality versus just ideas. So that's a very important part for me, that we develop that, because there's issues on that street that, I mean, it's, it's the entry, it's a gateway into Issaquah, and I want that to look a whole lot better than it does, and I want it to function a whole lot better than it does, but I want function first and form second. So as we do that, I'm really looking to follow that process, develop that, so that people can be involved and see. But one of the big issues I have in there, as mentioned a number of times with other public comments, is the small business owners along Sunset. It is a business, commercial district, and it's getting into details here, but I think it's a big enough detail to mention that, that parking along there is important in a commercial district to support our small business owners. So I just want to bring that out, that that's just a real critical issue for me as we look at those and follow it the next couple of months. That's what I have for now.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I've spoke at, at last council meeting in regards to this particular agenda bill, and that the project has been so long overdue. I mean, as a downtown merchant for many, many years, and I've retired from that quite some time ago, this traffic that we see today would definitely be extremely difficult for somebody to succeed in business, as you see consistently as you walk downtown, that the smaller stores on Front Street are changing signs frequently and changing business frequently. It's difficult to survive in an area in which the traffic is at a standstill, and consumers wish, do not wish to come down there because they don't want to be bothered with the traffic and, and get stuck in it. I think we've also made some promises to our seniors at Providence Point for many years also, and it's a safety issue for them, as I, I see it. That road is difficult, it's fast-moving traffic as you're coming down off of that, off their, the plateau, and for anyone to be merging into that traffic, flying the way it does down the hill, I think is very difficult, and especially for our seniors. We already heard the comment, I had it written down too, that East Sunset Way is, is our gateway coming from the east, and if this is the first tourists and guests into our community are coming in, and if this is their first vision of our city, I think we can do better. It's, so, and also the business owners are extremely important to it. We have to make sure that we're considering that. It's not just simply homeowners along that road, but it is businesses who are thriving, paying their tax dollars to this community. We also have, so we need to make sure that the parking for them is kept in mind as we move forward with the conceptual drawing of this. move forward with the conceptual drawing of this, that parking on any business is your life breath. You, if you don't have parking, people, especially in busy traffic, will just simply drive Newport is, you know, it's just been promised for too many years, it has to happen, you know? Promising to do this again and not having it happen, we can't do that. This is a road, there is bicyclists and walkers, and so many times as you're driving down that road, and I see young kids close to the edge of the road, it's difficult for a parent and a grandparent to watch that. So hopefully we have some safety pieces put in there for safe walking to school. So I'm supporting this, it's long overdue, and hopefully we will be able to get the conceptual drawing for what Sunset's going to look like and get that to everyone prior to the election. But I am absolutely in support of this, and we need to begin to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? Mariah.
Thank you. So I just wanted to reiterate maybe a few things that I've heard from my fellow council members, but this is one piece of an overall transportation project, and I think a lot of this in terms of infrastructure and some of the things that we've already talked about are really long overdue. Newport Way in front of Issaquah Valley, that's been on my mind for a long time as my kids had gone to school there. As a new council member, this has been a lot to think through in a very short amount of time, but after much consideration, these four projects have really risen to the top for me, and I'm in support of all four of the projects and the ordinance as written. I do have a concern regarding Sunset and being able to take the parking, as we've talked about, into consideration for the small businesses, and I'm really glad that there will be some public engagement coming through infrastructure, and I'll look forward to that coming before council. That's very important to me, that we have the ability to look at that final design concept, and perhaps there could be more than one option. I don't know if that's feasible, but that's important to me as we look at Sunset. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? Council President Goodman. You're welcome.
I prepared some remarks too, because I too think that this is a pretty significant decision. I fully support putting this bond with local transportation projects on the ballot in November. The time is now to go to voters to ask for local dollars to pay for local projects. A delay only compounds our transportation issues. But I think we also should make it clear, this package does not fix traffic congestion. It is one step toward improving local streets for people who live, work, walk, ride bicycles, and recreate here. This package, as we've heard many times tonight, is but one small part of a much larger strategy for tackling traffic, and as you also have heard a couple people mention tonight, we've been tossing words back and forth to each other, such as "it's time to take back our town." Unfortunately, over the past few months, too many people I talk to aren't aware of what else we're doing and talking about with regard to our strategy. Yes, we know traffic is, to put it very mildly, horrible, and I would go so far as to say that traffic is at a crisis level during certain parts of the day in Issaquah, and I sit in that traffic too, so I'm well aware of how bad it is. The main reason traffic is horrible at times is because, as we all know, we've heard several times tonight, is Issaquah is now a regional intersection, as people who live to the north and the south of us make their way to and from I-90. Put it in a little bit of context, a little perspective, the population of the city of Issaquah has grown by about 340% since 1990. The city of Maple Valley during that same timeframe has grown in population by 1,975%. Samamish has grown more than 50% since incorporation and now has more than 52,000 residents. All of that growth occurred in silos, meaning the impacts of growth on surrounding communities is never considered. As areas around us grew, so did the commuter traffic through Issaquah. Issaquah cannot solve the regional traffic problem on its own. So, you might ask, what are we doing about regional traffic? And some of this is repetitive, but I will say it again. Issaquah-Hobart Road, it's a nightmare, and it is not currently on King County's radar screen. So Issaquah has taken the lead on sharing the cost of a corridor study to get the ball rolling with King County, and those talks about that corridor study start this week at the infrastructure meeting on Thursday. And as Mayor Butler alluded to earlier in the evening, we have also asked Mayor Butler to bring Maple Valley and other cities to the table because we need regional partnerships for regional solutions to regional problems. Issaquah School District also needs to be part of the solution as well. Truck routes. Council will be looking at ways we can have more control over the construction truck traffic through town, as those large trucks take a toll on our streets and quality of life. We've also talked to the mayor's office about considering more flashing yellow arrows, and to talk with the state about other possible improvements to SR-900 and the signals that they control that might make a difference to local traffic. And, this might get some people's attention, but we might even talk about tolling. Imagine if we partnered with King County to put a toll on Issaquah-Hobart Road near Highway 18, so those drivers peeling off to cut through Issaquah would pay a toll, and the funds would be used to improve Issaquah-Hobart Road because currently there is no funding to approve it, to improve the road even when the corridor study is done. So I have no idea if that could actually be accomplished, but we need all options on the table right now. As for traffic related to growth inside our city, we own that. Admittedly, the city and council in years past could have done some things better or different. We should have updated impact fees more regularly in order to better keep pace with growth. And then, of course, everyone has an opinion on whether the bypass decision was the correct one. I'm not interested in second-guessing that because it's history. The fact is that we have a backlog of local transportation projects that isn't getting any less expensive, and the list of bond projects will bring along needed improvements. Future bond issues certainly are a possibility, but we need to be more creative about finding the money to get more projects done more regularly. One of those has to do with school zone cameras. We only have one right now, but the council is looking at designating some or all of the net revenue from camera tickets to a dedicated fund for local transportation improvements. Council also will be considering adding red light cameras to intersections for ticketing drivers who are running red lights. That net revenue too could be dedicated to local transportation improvements. And we ought to be talking about an internal transportation system, and particularly if we continue to develop more densely. So we should have a conversation soon about the possibilities. Also very important and relevant to this conversation is that we may need to think about slowing down growth, or maybe something even a little bit more drastic, in order to ensure that the central area will be developed as we have envisioned. We have heard the complaints about certain developments loud and clear, and I have the same concerns about the pace and quality of growth. Last week, staff did a phenomenal job of presenting a three-year evaluation of the Central Issaquah Plan, and I applaud them for that work. What we found is that so far, in many ways, the development under that plan has fallen short of the vision, and I find that unacceptable. We have a very bold vision for Central Issaquah, so we have to be bold in our policies. The Central Issaquah Plan envisions a special place, and at least implies that we are to be both creating and maintaining the great quality of life we already enjoy. If we don't ensure that, then we will have failed. So now knowing, three years later, that we are getting the kind of development we allow, but in many ways not what we envisioned, then we have a great challenge before us. And that challenge is, how do we turn our intentions into reality? Our challenge is to figure out what policy changes we need to make in order to achieve the vision. And if we can't do that very soon, then we may need to take a pause until we figure out precisely what those policies need to be. So I hope the context of the transportation bond is clearer by my comments and comments from my fellow council members tonight. We would be asking for local dollars for local projects. The other issues, regional traffic and the pace of development, are absolutely related and critical as well, but those are being addressed separately. I hope this motion passes because I see this bond also as a huge opportunity for a sustained and very public conversation about our traffic issues. This bond at this time, and these projects, are the right thing to do for this community.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of good comments this evening, and, you know, a few years ago when we were really forming the central area plan, and then the follow-on to that, when we looked at concurrency and we looked at what needed to be done for really the roadway system around here to function effectively, it was clear that action like tonight we were considering wasn't going to be necessary. And I think we saw that about two years ago. So this has been a long time getting here. There's a lot of really, I appreciate Stacy's comments about talking about growth, about the central area plan, and I really appreciate everybody's comments as well. And I did, to help me, I didn't prepare comments, but I did prepare a PowerPoint. And this, it's just, listen to these chuckles going on, this is funny. This is really, I'm doing this really just to help you understand how my thoughts were organized. And it's not a fancy one, but earlier you heard Stacy say, "it's about taking back our town," and that's a phrase that I think is very descriptive of the frame, my frame of mind, and I know some others sitting here as well, and I believe also many of our fellow citizens. And so here's how I frame my thinking, and, you know, a lot of comments have been made this evening already, how we've been doing numerous different things, and that this is just one facet of a multi-pronged strategy. Earlier this evening, Emily showed a pie chart, and this was just one slice of that pie. And I think it's important, and some of this is repetitive as well, we know that, based upon the concurrency work, we realized that we could, we should, and are now collecting the level of impact fees from developers that is their fair share, and we can, we'll be plowing that back into improvements. You know, for things to work within the city the way we envision it, we really, there needs to be an increase of people circulating around town, not using single occupancy vehicles. It has to be transit, it has to be car pools, it has to be walking, it has to be bicycles. And to that extent, at least now, we have a citywide non-motorized mobility plan. That's a critical part of achieving our long-term vision. And we, last year, we conducted a pedestrian crossing study. That also is a very critical step that brought in the perspective of many of our citizens on what other improvements we needed to make. If we're going to improve the non-motorized circulation, the crossing study will be an important element, the improvements made to make sure that we can be successful non-motorized. We've created a regional agenda, and you heard Councilmember Dunn here earlier, and I heard it was mentioned here from the diocese already, boy, we're going to hammer that. We have now a real focus on working with other jurisdictions, the county and the state, because, and it was said very well this evening by my colleagues, that we're at this, geographically we're at a crossroads, we're between population centers and the freeway, how they get to their jobs. And if we're going to manage the regional traffic, then we have to work with our regional partners. And we've taken a step forward with that regional agenda, which specifically addresses working with the county on the Hobart Road. And then, of course, on those projects, local projects that needed to be funded locally, we convened the Traffic Task Force. And now I'm going to get a little bit more to the actual items that we're considering. And there's really a big body of potential projects they could have chose, we could be considering this evening. Wasn't that long ago where we adopted our 2017 Transportation Improvement Plan, and there's all kinds of transportation and traffic and mobility and circulation projects within that. There are some projects that really are all about capacity, either future capacity or capacity issues that we have today. There are other projects that the task force considered had to do with parking, and Mary Lou mentioned that earlier, and it was also one of the recommendations that we got from the task force that we're not considering this evening. We know that some of those projects have to do with what's known as complete streaks. It's, again, it's that non-motorized, but it's sidewalks, it's crossings, and other incomplete, non-motorized improvements to roads. We have many projects on our list to do that. And the non-motorized, it's not just complete streets, but it's actually corridors, you know, for non-motorized circulation. Some of our projects on our Transportation Improvement Plan are non-motorized completely. We also have projects on that list that are very regional in their nature. Now, no one's mentioned tonight, probably the big one, long-term, that's going to make a huge difference overall circulation, is a new overcrossing on I-90. Mary Lou mentioned the Fourth Avenue underneath I-90, that had a huge impact. And there's another big one on our list, which would be a new overcrossing. We have to have the federal and state support to do a project like that, just like we need to have county support to do a project to really make a difference on the Hobart Road. And then finally, you know, there's some of those projects in that big list were all about improving safety. And just for a reminder, that master list of projects that we have, as per our TIP, currently totals $428 million in projects. Now, that's a pretty significant number, and I think if you're following what we're doing tonight, we're only looking at a small portion of that. But I think it's worthy of noting that between the new 62nd Street extension and the East Lake Samamish work that's being done, that 50 million of that 428 is already funded. Further, by my estimate, the I-90 overcrossing and the improvements of the interchanges on I-90 at Front and at 900 account for another 120 million of that 428. So that means, you know, we still have 250 million of that 428 to be thinking about. Now, this bond that we're considering is addressing about 50 million worth of that backlog. So, you know, that leaves of that 428, you know, there's about 200 million that, you know, we still don't have a solution for, but that's, you know, that's, we're not trying to do it all tonight, we're trying to do a very important aspect of that. So this is the big list that we have, and that's the size of it is, that makes up, these are the, describes the various projects that are in that list. Now, between the task force and the council, we use various criteria. We looked, and so this is a build. So, you know, we looked at projects where clearly people are having difficulty, they're not functioning at the level that they should. We scored projects, scored not, kind of informally, on how ready to go are they. And as we heard, you know, some tonight, both the Providence Point intersection on 43rd and Newport Way, the eastern segment, are pretty far along, whereas Sunset Way, we're going to follow a process and get to that decent understanding of design even before the election time. And I said, when I proposed we put Sunset on, when the list was three, and I proposed we added it to four, I said that under the condition that we're going to address the parking concerns that we've heard from the public, and that is my firm position going forward with Sunset, that we will retain some level of the parking so it works for the people who live and who have businesses along that way. That's my goal. We looked at what level of community support there was for given projects. We asked ourselves whether this is a project we could do ourselves, or was it more complex and we needed other jurisdictions' help? And that's where both the Hobart Road and the I-90 overcrossing are examples of projects we can't do ourselves. So we only considered those that we could accomplish ourselves. Again, because we have to increase the number of trips that are not single occupancy vehicles, there must be more non-motorized transportation, and so we use that as a filter. And finally, we looked at projects that would have significant impact. So from that master list, using these criteria, really what's come in front of us this evening is a shortlist, and we know it has four projects that are on that. So, and so, once that list of projects, you know, was identified, and of course, the task force, of course, originally had nine, they then looked at funding, but I think it's important to just take a step back and make sure, and this is kind of educational, you know, what are our funding sources today? Now, there's, you know, how do we, how do we fund transportation projects today? And is, and this is a list here, and just, you probably see yourself on there somewhere, right? We collect taxes and fees, the city collects them directly, right? So if you shop, you pay sales tax, some of that comes back to us, and some of it goes back into transportation. If you're a property owner, you pay property taxes, we collect some of that, and it goes back into transportation. If you're a business owner, you pay a business and occupation tax, some of that goes into transportation. If you sell real estate, we collect, there's a real estate excise tax that's collected, that goes back into transportation. And if you're a developer, you pay sales tax on your development. And if you're a developer, you pay sales tax on your development, but also you pay impact fees. All of those are collected by the city, and we use those today, and we're going to continue to use these to fund the various, just maintaining and other smaller projects that we can do today. We also have other sources of funds. There's the Federal Highway Authority and through the Puget Sound Regional Council that distributes those dollars. We can apply for grant monies from them. We can apply for grant money from the Washington State Department of Transportation. We can apply for grant money from King County and from other sources. So these are, both those collected today and other outside sources of funds that we work with. Now, the Task Force looked at how are we going to fund these four projects, and there was really five different options that they considered. There were voter-approved street levies, licensed vehicle fees, and sales tax that were all considered. None of those were recommended by the Task Force, and I support that decision as well, that, to not consider those options. We also considered a business license per employee, which, and all of these remain on the table for future reference, but the only one recommended by the Task Force and that we're considering this evening is the voter-approved property tax levy. And so I thought, you know, and I think Bill mentioned earlier, he had some concern about the overall burden at this property tax levy. So I thought I'd do a little bit of analysis and see, you know, what is the burden, and what would it be? And I thought some data would be very helpful here. I got this off the King County site. There are 30-some cities within King County, and what this is a list, it's a sorted list from CTAC at the top, that city collects 3%. Now, 3% at every $3,000 evaluation, they collect that in property tax from residents and property owners within their boundaries, all the way down to, in the bottom right, Hunts Point is 0.3%. Today, we collect $1.2 per thousand, and that rate, as you can see, is toward the bottom third of all cities within King County. The average within King County is $1.53. So today, we're significantly below the average. So if you're wondering, you know, are we good stewards, and are we potentially looking at a property tax rate that is maybe out of line with our neighbors, I think the consideration in front of that, my answer, my sense, the answer to that question is no. I think we're very modest in the money we collect today compared to our neighbors, and the average, we're below the average. And then, then I thought I'd do, take another look. What would it mean to me specifically, and use this just as an example, so everybody might need to grab their glasses to see all this? So I actually, this is actually the breakdown of my own taxes. That's a picture of my tax bill I get from King County in the bottom right. So for 2016, my house and property is assessed at $603,000, which means my bill for 2016 is $6,096.26. And then the breakdown on the left side of that is, it's in descending order by how much I pay to each of the jurisdictions. So out of that six, almost $6,100 bill, I pay almost 2,500, or roughly 40%, to the school district. I pay over $1,300 to Washington State. I pay almost $900 to King County. Then it comes to the City of Issaquah, where I'll be paying $729 to the City of Issaquah. And from there, it continues to go down. You can see the amounts to the King County Library System, to the Emergency Medical Service, to the Port of Seattle, and to the Flood Control District, and a few other smaller ones. So all of that totals up to the $6,096.22. Now, if we apply this rate at 25 years, that would add $198.99. So my bill would go from $6,100 to $6,300, roughly, I'm rounding. And, okay, so that's one way to think about it. We heard earlier from Emily, if you have a $500,000 home, your amount would be $165. Now, with the chart up there, I thought a visualization, it certainly helps me. The gray bars represent by jurisdiction, kind of in proportion, what is the levy rate. And so it goes from lowest to highest, so you can see, you know, visually, that our, the amount of our property taxes we pay to the school district is quite substantial compared to our other taxes. And that's almost double what we pay to the state, which is more than we pay to the county, which is, of course, more than us property owners pay to the city. Now, what the green bar represents, the only one that changed, of course, is the city, because this only considers what the city would do. So the green bars represent, you know, after, if this passes, in proportion to the other taxes that are collected to the school district, the state, and the county, you can see where we would be. So, you know, I look at that visually and think, boy, we pay a lot for schools, and I've supported all those bonds and those, and the school district has it as well. But proportionally, the city is small compared to what we pay for schools, and we're talking about an increase that I think, when you look at overall distribution of the funds that we pay, I think is very reasonable. And I hope that this kind of pictorial, and this representation is helpful for others as well. And then, just two more slides real quickly. You know, you've, this is somewhat of a repeat as well, you know, the, beyond this bond, you know, we're going to tackle this Gua-Hobart Road, and you heard tonight, I mean, this is changing fast. You know, we heard, again, Councilmember Dunn mentioned that, and we know that we're going to take it up in the infrastructure as well. And that's required to make the difference on Front Street. We're going to continue to work with the state to do their parts on 900, both on overcrossings and also interchange improvements, but also on State Route 818. That's very important. That's been part, that is something that this, we are doing already, and will continue to do in lobbying Olympia for improvements there. We're going to continue to raise outside funds, those, and those were mentioned earlier, getting grants from those various sources. We're going to continue to collect the impact fees. We're going to continue to grow our non-motorized mobility opportunities. We're going to, we're going to increase the safety for pedestrians, cyclists, but again, that's very important for us to be successful. And then that last one is not, is actually very, very, very key. 12 years ago, I lived down in May Valley, and I used to drive up the Hobart Road, and it was terrible, 12 years ago. And so what did we do? We moved into town. So I am no longer in the mix on the Hobart Road. And, and so, that's a lesson very keen for me, that if you can live here, you don't have to be part of the regional traffic. And unfortunately, for too many people who would like to live here, we just don't have the housing stock, affordable housing stock for a lot of the people that work here in the service business and other jobs that do exist here. So earlier, and we hear it quite a bit, you know, not that many years ago, housing affordability wasn't on people's radar. It is very much, and I think it is part of our strategy to pursue more housing affordability within Issaquah. That will reduce some of the regional pass-through traffic. So all of this is beyond the bond, and I just want to summarize, you know, this is about, we got to take back our town. We're going to do big, we are considering big projects tonight where these are ones that we must do ourselves. We are going to get King County and the state to feel our pain. They're going to understand that when things happen on 18, and when things happen on the Hobart Road, we get hammered, and we're going to work with them, and we're going to do something about this. And, but, I think, also, I think we've done a very good job. We're seeing the big picture, and we're taking very specific actions for purpose to address known issues. And so a lot of them were outlined earlier by other members, my other colleagues here on the council earlier this evening. But this is the way I've been thinking about this, and I wholeheartedly support, and I look forward to, you know, working with my other council members as we continue to shepherd this through the legislative process. And I look forward to hearing and talking with my fellow citizens and property owners in Issaquah as this moves forward. Thank you.
Additional discussion or questions? Council President Goodman.
Thank you. I just wanted to place one bit of information on the record, and that is to disclose that I am the part-owner of a building on Sixth Avenue. It happens to be on the corner of Sixth Avenue and Sunset Way. I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2774, providing for the submission to the voters of the city at a special election to be held therein on November 8, 2016, in conjunction with the state general election to be held on the same date, of a proposition authorizing the city to issue its general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing certain transportation improvements, in the principal amount of no more than $50 million payable by annual property tax levies to be made in excess of regular property tax levies, and to levy those excess property taxes. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. I had several, well, that's a great first step. Now it's up to our citizens. I had some discussion previously that there may be some direction that council members might want to provide to the administration going forward in terms of proviso to the ordinance that was just adopted. And with that, I'll call on Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to propose two motions this evening for consideration by council. So I'll propose the first one, and then if there's a second for it, I'll provide some comments that give some context. I would like to propose that council moves to direct the administration to prepare a proposed design and request for funding allocation for interim improvements to the Maple Street-Northwest Trader Joe's Target intersection, including completion of crossing study improvements already adopted by the council. Administration will continue to work with property owners on cost-sharing options and any possible redevelopment plans that would impact the timing, funding, and scope of a final permanent solution.
I second that.
So there is a motion that has been made and seconded. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to explain why I'm doing this and why I'm proposing it this evening. In looking at all of the body of work that was done by Traffic Task Force and going to our several opportunities that we had to meet and greet with the public and talk about projects and what was important, one of the ones that rose to the top that we did not decide to include in our package tonight was the Maple Street-Target Trader Joe's intersection. This is probably the project I heard about the most, both at our open house and in other contacts with the public. I think that at this point in time, because some of these improvements were already being considered in 2016 and 2017 through the crosswalk pedestrian study, I believe there's an opportunity here to direct staff to look at another temporary reconfiguration that really would make a lot more sense out of this intersection. Instead of saying that we're going to wait for the, this large-scale project to be funded in another bond, or wait for the reconfiguration to happen with redevelopment, this is a problem now. This is a place in town that we shop at, that people from out of town come to shop to. It's very, very busy, and it is highly-desired project when the residents were making comments on the list that came to Traffic Task Force. So I think that this project focuses on a place where the Issaquah residents are having difficulty, and if they could, we could have a fix here in short order, even an interim fix. This would do our residents some good and provide additional safety at this intersection. So my thoughts were to provide this direction this evening.
Are there questions or discussion on the motion? Councilmember Ramos.
I would support this. I think Councilmember Paulie is very right that we had a lot of input from citizens on this, a lot of concern on this intersection, the safety and so forth. I think that the $5 million project is just not ripe at this time, but I think we could do something very inexpensively, very simply, and when I, and very quickly, I'm thinking like six to nine months, I mean, when I say quickly, something that would help improve safety and flow, so the drivers are clear in what they, what they need to do, pedestrians are clear. I go through that intersection on my bike quite often, and I'm just always watching for what's going on, and it is, it is a safety problem. So I think we could do something simply. I've talked with some of city staff, they have some ideas already, to put something together and within our budget, or very quickly in the 2017 budget, if we need be, to fund something to make that a safer intersection. Do something simple and quick, it's the way to go for me. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions? Council President Goodman.
I, I think that's a good idea, too. My heartburn was the, was the two issues that were mentioned. $5 million seems like, it seemed like out of, out of proportion for what the fix would be, although I'm not a traffic engineer, and also the possibility that redevelopment could happen soon enough that it would look like a foolish and spendy investment. And so something interim makes a lot of sense. Also, if there are projects that are relatively inexpensive, not, you know, not a $20 million road project, I'd rather favor figuring out a way to get those done without putting them on a, on a bond measure. I would prefer to see those, those for larger projects, sort of as a last resort. I'm wondering, though, is it appropriate possibly for Emily, maybe, if you have any comments about how, how this might work, what you envision for, not envision, but what could be done at that intersection that's interim and less expensive?
Sure. There are some improvements that we've already discussed, as was referenced. There were a few modifications that were recommended by TSI, the consultant that helped us with the crossing study, and those short-term improvements were included in the package that you approved, part of that $820,000 allocation. In addition, TSI made some additional recommendations that were higher cost, needed more valuation, and more engineering. And those were listed as possible future improvements. What we would do is take a look at those recommendations and try to pull some pieces from that list and incorporate them into this temporary improvement. The pieces that were included in the $820,000 package, that was citywide crossing improvements, involved restriping crosswalks, taking out the colored pavement that has the appearance of being a roundabout, but isn't meant to function that way. So they were improvements to provide some clarity, reduce confusion, and maybe help pedestrians get across the street. There was some necking down, too, at those crosswalks to shorten the distance for a crossing. What we would like to look at is TSI's recommendations to create an element of traffic control, so it's better understood by drivers and everybody else that's navigating in that intersection, who has right of way and who needs to wait, and all of that. So that's a piece that we would need to come back to you and ask for probably an additional allocation to implement.
Any, any possible idea on timeframe?
Excellent question. I'm sure we will get busy on that right away. As I said, we've already begun kind of thinking about at least that first set of improvements, and now we'll need a little bit more time to think about the second piece. I don't suspect it will take a lot of time, but we'd like to have a little conversation first about what's necessary to do that, and then, as I said, we would anticipate, I'm guessing, coming back and asking for additional funding to make that happen. Thank you.
I have a question about the, I assume you used the word interim.
Not quite interim. Oh, it was interim.
Funding allocation for interim improvements. So that assumes that there is some kind of other final, better, long-term solution. I'm not sure, I don't know what that is. So could you just speak to this? I mean, so, why interim? And what, you know, how far you think this would take us to where ultimately we need to be, or what other certain objectives in your mind that we would want to achieve interim that, and others that know we can until we actually have a long-term solution?
Sure. In the Central Issaquah Plan, which is a build-out over a 20-year horizon, there is a different street grid than is currently shown in that area, and it actually shows that there could be new streets, city streets, created within that development. And right now, one of the reasons that makes it a particularly odd intersection is because part of it is a city street, and part of it is private driveways accessing a city street, however, it has the appearance and feel of a four-way intersection. So the fact that something is likely to come, but on a horizon that we can't predict, it could be two years or three years, in which case the developer not only would want to have input into the final configuration, but it may determine where they may actually be creating new public roads. And so that could be in three years, that could be in 20 years. But in the meantime, residents in town have said, "I hate that intersection." And so for me, I think one of the reasons Traffic Task Force pushed it And so for me, I think one of the reasons Traffic Task Force pushed it through was because of the amount of public attention it got. And so at this time, I feel, when you hear that much concern about the safety for pedestrians and vehicles and the confusion created by the current configuration, if we can do something that can alleviate the confusion, it may not be the most beautiful-looking intersection afterwards, but if it functions better, I think we should do it now so that we are not collecting all this information about what a problem it is, but it'll get fixed in the future, which could be three years, which could be 20 years. So that's why I'd like to include it now.
So, thank you for that. And I think I heard you say that really the long-term solution, the vision for that, we may have not seen yet, because property owners in the area who may choose to redevelop, you know, may require something quite different than I can imagine right now, maybe even slightly different located. I'm just, you didn't say that specifically, but that... So it's that type of long-term solution that you're using as the horizon when you call this interim? So you're talking about making changes in place, right here, right now? And I just want to make a comment. Yeah, the $5 million price tag, I thought, you know, boy, you know, we could just put a little island in there and hire a traffic cop for a lot less money and really make improvements just to hustle people through. So there are different ways. Maybe we can help the performance and alleviate frustration in that area.
Councilmember Baptiste.
So in regard to the Trader Joe's intersection, this is something that I touched on, I think, earlier in the process when we were talking, because I had heard a lot of feedback regarding people's pain around that issue. So I would be in support of this. I think that this makes really good sense to try to come up with something interim and something that would make, take away some of that pain for the people that are shopping there. Anyway, I think this makes really good sense.
Additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of directing the administration to further develop a proposal within the next two years for city council's consideration to create... Oh, whoops! That's the wrong one. Excuse me. That's a sneak preview.
Sorry, Fred, I switched the order. I bet.
Okay. All those in favor of directing the administration to prepare a proposed design and request for funding allocation for interim improvements to the Maple Street Northwest/Trader Joe's/Target intersection, including completion of crossing study improvements already adopted by the council. We will continue to work with property owners on cost-sharing options and any possible redevelopment plans that would impact the timing, funding, and scope of a final permanent solution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. I did provide a little bit of a sneak preview. Councilmember Paulie, I believe you have another.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have an additional motion this evening that I mentioned in my earlier comments. And I'll read the motion first, and if there is a second, then I'd like to give some context around why I proposed it this evening. Council moves to direct the administration to further develop a proposal within the next two years for the city council's consideration to create additional parking capacity in Old Town.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you. This project also jumped out at me. It's a different kind of project. It doesn't have to do with driving lanes and bike lanes and sidewalks, but it does address a concern we have heard for years about a potential lack of parking in the downtown area. The... I was surprised that the Traffic Task Force put a 400-stall parking garage on their list of projects for us to consider, but I understand when we're trying to figure out regional solutions and multimodal solutions, that, you know, thinking of a large garage for, you know, transit purposes makes sense, but Old Town does not seem to be the right location, or in the center of Old Town does not seem to be the right location. However, there was an element of this was that there would be some assistance to Old Town in terms of what is a perceived deficit in parking. We've talked about Old Town and parking for a decade or more in terms of, do we have enough? Is it in the right places? Is it contributing to a decline in prosperity of businesses downtown? Is it difficult to go downtown on busy after-hour periods on Saturdays and Friday nights and during events to find parking? So the concept I was thinking was that I would like to see some additional parking capacity occur in Old Town, and I believe there's several ways that that could happen, and I didn't specify in the motion what that would be, but I think we should be looking at a potential private-public partnership. We could be looking at a public-public partnership with another entity that has existing parking structure, or we could be looking at a current parking inventory and how it is currently used with private property owners and seeing if there is a way to create additional capacity in the evening hours when certain businesses are not open. And none of those are simple. They're all fairly complicated. Even a city-owned solution would mean that we would have to purchase land and do the construction ourselves. But this motion here is just for a study. We're investing a lot in our Old Town. We are revisiting plans for the area. We are putting infrastructure investments in. I think this is a piece that goes hand-in-hand with that, and so I pulled it out and reduced it from what the Traffic Task Force had, but I think at this time, we need to be talking about it in tandem with other stuff that we're doing in Old Town. And that's why I brought it forward tonight.
Discussion or questions? Councilmember Wintersheim.
It wasn't that long ago that we studied traffic in the Old Town, or, excuse me, parking in the Old Town area. There was a parking study. There was an audit, or, I mean, there was, you know, people walked around and looked what was used and what wasn't, and there's been some effort to work with business owners and those that have parking lots and that we can mark appropriate. So, you know, you mentioned in here, you just mentioned maybe doing a parking study. So how would that... Would we just dust off the one that really isn't that old? Or are you, in your mind, you think of something different?
I'm not thinking more of a study to justify if there is a need. I'm thinking of a study to determine how many spots it is, because I don't think we need to study it anymore and say, "This is false. This isn't true." I believe we hear it from the businesses. I believe we hear it from people who are traveling downtown on a Friday or Saturday night, how difficult it is to get parking. This, to me, is about figuring out what the right number is.
Okay, so previous study, we just concluded that it wasn't needed?
I think that's a big part of the discussion. I think that can be a piece of information, the discussion, but this is about actually achieving more capacity, not coming back again and reporting and saying we don't need it. This, to me, is about a capacity issue. I think we need the parking.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Barber.
Do you have any idea who would be conducting the study and the cost of the study?
No, but we can see if Emily would like to address that, if you'd like.
If there's a cost associated with it?
Emily can probably address that, because it would be staff that would be working on it.
Your last name, Wikipedia?
So I think there were, there would be a couple ways that we would go about this. First, we would certainly turn to the study that had been done. Most recently, the Old Town Task Force took a look at this issue as well, so there's information out of their work that we would turn to. There's perhaps two distinct ways that we could achieve additional parking, optimal choices. One might be through structured parking that would create additional capacity. Another might be just to look at a consolidated parking plan. So as Councilmember Paulie mentioned, there might be inefficient use of existing, and that may create some capacity issues, because those spaces might be restricted in some way. So that's a way to address capacity. So we'd want to look at both the addition of new spaces and then the freeing up of existing spaces. I think that would be two angles that we could evaluate.
Emily, can you address Emily's concern about costs and timing and that kind of thing?
Cost and timing, and what would be different from, in this particular study, as different from other past studies that we've had? And absolutely, the time involved in staff and the dollar amount that it would take in order for... And maybe we need to come back with that information. How much is this going to cost us to study this again? And what's going to be a different outcome?
Sure. I don't have a funding proposal for you tonight. I'll just be open about that. We haven't asked our staff to take a look at what the cost would be to perform that kind of evaluation or to enter into those discussions with various property owners about their land use commitments, their lease restrictions, any of those things. I do anticipate that would, if we pursue that approach, that would take quite a bit of staff time or consultant time. So we would have to return to you with a proposal to enter into a contract and to provide the funding authorization for that scope. We have done some preliminary work on parking structure, but there's more work to be done on that piece. So we could return to you with a better understanding of what it would take resource-wise to complete that evaluation. Timing.
That's what it asks for. It just asks for a proposal. It doesn't ask you to do a study. So all this is doing is saying, "Come back and tell us what it would cost." That's what the motion reads. It doesn't say, "Go do a study." I can reread it if that would help. I tried, I sent it out, I should have brought copies, but I didn't. It's in your email. I sent it out at 7:00. Council moves to direct the administration to further develop a proposal within the next two years for the city council's consideration to create additional parking capacity in Old Town. It's not authorizing the study.
We certainly, speaking for the administration, we can certainly do that. Council President Goodman.
So it occurs to me, as I hear this again, that it says, "A proposal," if we cut it back, "A proposal to create additional parking capacity in Old Town." I don't read that as smaller parking structure or additional spaces. I read that as being many different options, limited hours parking, restricting hours for parking. That creates more capacity. It's pretty broad and could be pretty creative. And, yes, we've done more than one study. The studies go back to the '90s.
Councilmember Barber.
And I know a lot of times, as you drive around through the downtown area and there is what you perceive to be parking spaces not being used, it's because the merchants have requested that, they've got it signed, and it's being for their particular patrons who are coming to their businesses, and that's an important element if you're going to sign a lease in downtown Issaquah that you know you have, especially if you're a doctor or in, you know, other professions, that you can have your clientele come and park close to where you are, and that's the reason that a lot of them will continue to be serviced by those people. I guess after going through so many different studies and I... Not that it probably doesn't have some new approach to it, but we've been there and done that, and so far, we've not used any of the projects. I mean, in the past studies and proposals, we've not changed anything. So I don't see anything new and exciting and different, and a different approach. It's, let's do it again.
Councilmember Baptiste.
So as we were looking at the different projects and we had the larger parking structure, that was something that I was just unsure if we needed something to that capacity. But what I thought a lot about was the parking structure that we have near the library and something like that, or as we're talking about the different merchants that might allow for parking, maybe there are different hours that could be proposed. I think having what you're bringing forward and having it sort of be broad makes good sense to me, because I think that we have to look at a lot of different avenues. And I think that there is pain around people trying to get into downtown, especially on a Friday or Saturday night, because there isn't a lot of parking. And if there's an event going on, it's almost impossible, and I just experienced this on Saturday night, where many, many open spots that were toe-away zones, and there were, there was no hour designated, so those remained open. I had a few friends that gave up on meeting for a dinner and just kept going, because there was a big group meeting. But I really don't like to hear that people are giving up or they're saying, "I'm not going to come into downtown Issaquah because there's no parking," and I do hear that quite a lot. So I'm just surprised, as we're talking about the parking studies, but I think that having sort of a broad, a broad motion that could look at a lot of different avenues might make really good sense.
Council President Goodman.
I would agree with that, with Maria's comments, and I think the difference between what we've done before and what this proposes is this says, you know, "Let's not just do another study. Let's take the information that we have and actually come up with a proposal," and that's what I like about it.
Councilmember Ramos.
Kinda to you, Mr. Mayor. You just said a second ago, "This is something you could do easily from the administration's side."
I believe I said, "We can develop a proposal," and I might suggest that we could develop a proposal, and you could discuss this during budget deliberations as a path forward. I think the conversation, this is a very, very good conversation this evening, but it, the administration really has not had the opportunity to identify really what we're talking about. And I understand what Councilmember Paulie is saying and sort of the intent, but we're sort of all over the place this evening, and I think that if you want it bad, sometimes you get it bad and you miss some important things. And I would rather that we have more time to take what we've heard this evening and develop a proposal on a path forward, not getting into the nuts and bolts about what we're talking about. A timeline and some thoughts on how that would impact our workload, or what additional resources would we need to accomplish the work. I believe that this was, was this one of the recommendations from the Downtown DIA work that they did? Does anyone recall?
The Downtown Task Force had that evaluation, and they did ask to take a look at parking capacity in the downtown, so...
Councilmember Wintersheim.
So how this sounds different to me is there's a built-in assumption, because it says, "Create a proposal to create additional parking," so that it assumes additional parking is needed, and that's how it differs from what we've done before. And then, and I think like Stacy said a moment ago, and, I mean, the outcome from this is, again, not to create the capacity, but whether it be one or two or three or five different options on how to do it. A couple were mentioned already. So there's no doubt in my mind, if there was more capacity, that there'd be a much better, what we call, my business user experience. And there's no doubt in my mind. So this is an ask to direct you to, this is an ask of the administration to, within two years, give us a proposal, how to create capacity, improve additional, create additional capacity. So that's, I understand that, and I can support this.
Additional discussion or questions? Councilmember Ramos.
And that's just, thank you for answering that. I wanted to make sure that it was clear on what we're looking at here. I know we've got things from a number of different historical places and other committees. So if you're clear on what you can do and you're comfortable with that, then I can go with this also.
Additional discussion or questions? The motion was to direct the administration to further develop a proposal within the next two years for city... next two years for city council's consideration to create additional parking capacity in Old Town. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries with a vote of five to one. Councilmember Barber voting nay. That completes our work on Agenda Bill 7198. Our next regular business item is Agenda Bill 7184, Intergovernmental Relations Manager Position. This is coming back from Services and Safety, and I believe that Councilmember Winterstein chaired that meeting, and so I'll call on him.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm going to read part of the summary statement in this bill. I don't believe there's any type of staff presentation or anything intended. Okay. "So, the city council adopted the regional agenda in order to effectively enhance the city's ability to achieve its policy goals. The regional agenda also includes several committees to which the mayor, staff, and council members are to be assigned. The Intergovernmental Relations Manager will provide executive-level support to the council members on these committees and coordinate with relevant staff from other departments. This position will also represent the city and various regional committees and, as assigned, and will manage the contract with the city's lobbyist. The city completed a market analysis to determine the appropriate salary for the proposed position. Positions in the market with comparable responsibility for developing a legislative program, providing strategic direction, and promoting regional relationships were reviewed and included. Because this position will not have responsibility for executive-level operations, it was not matched to department or division directors. Based on the market analysis, the city is proposing the position be placed on Range E-045 of the exempt salary schedule, annual salary $90,912 to $116,052." That was the original summary statement. This came to council. It first went to the Services and Safety back on June 14th. It was, it got kind of beat up in that committee. It was voted down one to two. The chair brought it forward to the council, and then we did discuss it anyway, and it was moved and sent back to Infrastru, excuse me, to Services and Safety. And the administration provided an update, some clarified both, even though we do not officially, or nor should we propose policy, or, excuse me, position descriptions and job responsibilities, the only legislative action in front of us this evening is to approve the position and the salary for it. We, I think, I think the regional agenda was spawned by the council, and then someone to help us achieve that, it's very then important to us on the council that that, if we create a position to help achieve that agenda, that we believe the position description is consistent with the object, our objectives for the regional agenda. And with the updates that were provided and are in the Agenda Bill, then the Services and Safety last week reviewed this and unanimously voted to forward the updated information to this council for approval this evening. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016 dash?
14.
14, authorizing the position of Intergovernmental Relations Manager.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion or questions?
I, I am fully supportive of this position. As we've heard mentioned, we have a regional agenda, and I would, that is a, that is a new, a new concept in terms of cities in the state that we'd heard before. And we have also talked a lot tonight about our regional traffic issues. And that position is critical to helping us achieve all of our goals on our regional agenda, not just traffic. We need somebody instilled in that position that can help us achieve those goals. It's, I think it's just a critical position, and I'm, just want to say that. I just fully support it.
Additional discussion or questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, it's, perhaps might feel a little bit harsh, but with, when I look back at the recent history of the Issaquah, the lens I see, I think it was partly in due to our lack of attention to regional issues. It's often said around here, and you'll hear it at the Public Issues Committee meeting, Mariah, that if you're not, you know, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And I tend to think of it, if you're not on the, at the table at these regional issues, where important policy and funding decisions are being made that affect our town, if you're not at the table, then you simply don't get served. And, and, and so, this is, I think this is a bold step for us. It is part of us taking back our town. We are, we are getting ourselves better organized in the city as ever had, has been before, being aware of the issues at the regional level, being aware of all the theaters and the boards and the commissions, where these issues are on the agenda, talking about our positions about those issues, planning and executing a strategy to see that our interests are met and that for the region are met as well. And so, and so someone needs to own it. If we're going to be successful at the regional agenda, someone needs to own it. So, I think this is all part of it. To me, it's, it's part and parcel with what we're trying to do with traffic, what we're trying to do with managing growth, and within an area that we all love dearly, within an area that is, is growing very fast, within an area that is constrained geographically and puts special restraints upon us. And so, definitely, I like, I like the idea. This position will give ownership to somebody to drive that, and I think it's a very important step in our maturation as a city.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Councilmember Ramos.
I too support this position. We do have a new regional agenda, and we're reaching out more and more, and this position will help us tremendously in that. But it is new, and how it works and how it functions is new. And I think the time we took to go back and forth a little bit to really clarify, and so everybody's at a clear understanding of how it's going to function, since we don't have it before. I think that was well worth the time to take, to just get, we're all talking on the same page, same expectations of this person whenever they show up, is how we're going to work together. I think that was well worth the time we took to do that, and I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Patisse.
I just want to echo Bill's comment. I think that it was really prudent, because it is a new position, to send this back and take a look at it and to clarify some of the questions that we had. But I think this is critically important to the regional agenda, and now it reads much more clear to me when I'm reading through that. A lot has gone into the definition.
Are you ready to vote?
As long as everybody who said something has had a chance to speak. So, I just wanted to say that I don't know if this vote passes. I don't know if the first person to fulfill it is already on staff, and maybe they are, or maybe they're listening tonight, they live in the area, or maybe they live on the East Coast. I don't know where they are, where they're going to come from. But this should be one very exciting position to create something new in a very dynamic area. And I'm just really looking at the administration, the people do this level of hiring to know how, let you know how critical we think it is. So, it's going to be an exciting position for somebody.
Thank you. Are you ready to act? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2016-14, authorizing the position of Intergovernmental Relations Manager, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries unanimously. That concludes our regular business items. We'll now move to good of the order. Councilmember Winterstein.
So, I got this in the mail. It's my King County voter's ballot. We have a primary August 2nd. I think it's due. I'm just urging all my council members and everybody, all registered voters, to make sure you turn it in by August 2nd. There's a lot of very critical issues and positions for, up for election, and I'll be feeling, I haven't even opened mine yet, but I just wanted to remind everybody that's got them, that please vote.
And as a reminder, you can save a 49-cent stamp and drop your completed ballots off at the ballot box at the entrance to City Hall slash the Issaquah Police Department. Councilmember Goodman.
I just wanted to share a few thoughts that I've had since the, in the past, you know, primarily the past few weeks, since we've been out in the public. And I've been out in the public talking to people about the transportation, potential transportation bond. And one of the things that is a recurring theme is that the people I talk to don't seem to be aware of all of the things that we're doing, which is one of the reasons that I was glad that we went into a great deal of detail tonight about, about the efforts that we're taking to tackle traffic. And, but it bothered me that so many people didn't know what we're doing. So, I had some thoughts that I wanted to pass along about maybe some, just some food for thought, some improvements that we might be able to make about communication and our own transparency, because as I think it's a council responsibility and not just administration responsibility, to let the public know what, what, what we're doing and what we're thinking about. And so, one is just a thought I have about the website. You know, we have really great substantive explanations about what we're doing about traffic on our GoIssaquah page, and, but I've, hearing comments about it being a little bit harder, hard to find. And what I would like to say is that I think it should just scream "transportation." And I think it should, the goal should be that anybody who goes to the website, it's just literally impossible to not know that transportation is first and foremost. And the model that I kind of look at as the website that I've gone to, that I can't get away from finding out about the most current marijuana issues, is the liquor, it's now the Liquor and Cannabis Board. They have all of the information about marijuana. Their links are what I call "above the fold," like on a newspaper. All the most important stuff is above the fold. And so, I think that is one idea that, about having that information front and center, so literally nobody can miss that information when, or at least how to get to that information when you get to the website. The other thought that I had is that we do, we talk about so much, but we talk about, much of what we talk about is via subcommittee. And our, our committees are not televised. And I know that we have talked about televising them in the past, and I'm, think we should put some thought now into upcoming budget deliberations and think about whether the time is now for us to dust off our past, I think we had a council goal about televising committee meetings. I think it would do a lot for our communication with the public and our transparency. Not that we're not transparent, it's just that it's not easy to see us when we're not, when we're not televised, when we're doing a lot of our meetings, meetings via subcommittee. And then, finally, and this isn't an original thought, well, probably others aren't either, but the, wondering if maybe we should consider establishing a transportation commission, committee, whatever you want to call it, so that we can, like the Traffic Task Force was able to do, we can have a, we can broaden the conversation and have transportation issues be a part of a constant, ongoing conversation, so that that commission could help advise us or the mayor's office on a just myriad transportation issues. So, it's nothing that we have to discuss tonight. I just wanted to share my thoughts about what I've been running into, because I just did find it concerning that just about everybody I talk to that isn't a regular at our council meetings or wasn't involved in the task force, I found myself having to start the story from the beginning. And I don't think that that's a very efficient way of communication. So, that's all I had.
Thank you. Mariah?
I just wanted, we had such an important vote tonight, and I just wanted to say one more time that I wanted to thank the Transportation Task Force and all of the members of the public and residents that came and gave their public feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for good of the order this evening? Seeing none, then we are adjourned.